I wanted to, on behalf of Governor Shobrin, I wanted to welcome everyone to our public hearing on health care reform benefits. And I'm going to start by just giving you a little bit of the lay of the land of how the hearing will work, but first I'm going to turn it over to Anya to...
(Inaudible)
Oh, right, Robyn Lund, Director of Health Care Reform.
Thank you, Robyn. I'm Anya Rader-Wallack. I'm Chair of the Green Mountain Care Board. With me today are the four other members of the board, Alan Memsey, Erin Hine, Al Boe, and Con Hogan. We're pleased to be here. We have a role in benefits around health care reform. It's distinct from the administration's role. Robyn is representing the administration. But we thought to make the best use of everybody's time, we would do this exercise together of gathering input from the public about benefits and about what benefits Vermonters would like to see covered at how under health reform. So, thank you in advance to those of you who are going to offer your input today, and we look forward to hearing.
I also wanted to just mention that here in Montpelier, we have Christine Oliver, who's the Deputy Secretary of the Agency of Human Services. Thanks for attending. And we will ask other officials at sites to introduce themselves when we get to your site. So, the way this is going to work is we will rotate through each of the sites and hear from two people per site. Each person will have about two minutes. We have, we believe, probably more people in attendance than will fit during our time slot, but we're going to do our best to hear from as many people as we can. For those of you who have signed up in advance, make sure you talk to the Department of Health representative who's at your site so that they know you're here. In addition, when you hear the word "time," please complete your sentence, and that will be the end of your testimony. If you continue, you will hear the word "time" again, and at that point, I apologize in advance, but I will have to cut you off because we do have a packed hearing tonight. And just for your information, this hearing will be recorded. So, we're going to go through the sites in alphabetical order. And the other thing I wanted to note, because we do have so many folks here, is if prior testimony supports your position in the same manner, consider condensing your comments or deferring to that previous testimony so that we know that you agreed with them, but so that the hearing won't consist of people saying the same things over and over, and we can accommodate more people and more subjects. So, thank you very much. So, we're going to start with Bennington. Can we hear from the first person in Bennington?
Good afternoon. My name is Charlie Murphy.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Char... Okay. My name... Good afternoon. My name is Charlie Murphy. I live here in Bennington. I'm a volunteer with the Vermont Worker Centers Health Care as a Human Right Campaign. I feel that as we discuss benefits, we should determine the needs of Vermonters first and be able to get the appropriate and comprehensive health care that Act 48 has required. The focus should be on care, not coverage. The Green Mountain Care should include, in my opinion, such things as long-term care, mental health services, vision, and dental services. I'll talk about dental. My father died at the age of 55, when, you know, a long time ago. He had three teeth, no dentures. He deferred his dental needs so that his family could get the care that we needed as we could afford it. We're very low income. I was heading down that route as a young man, but was able to turn it around in my late twenties. I moved back home with my mother and was able to save some money. As a result, I was able to get my teeth repaired, my teeth fixed. Currently, I have, you know, coverage through a dental plan that my employer has. If they didn't have that, or if I wasn't employed, I'd be hard-pressed to have my dental care met, my needs met. I have, you know, several crowns. I'll need more as I age. The cost of a crown runs, you know, over $1,000. You can't go to a hospital to get your dental care met unless you have an abscess or infection. Hospitals don't provide dentistry. There, it's apparently, it's a grave need in this area. Many dentists have pooled their resources one time a year and provide a free dental care a day. I feel that you should not take into consideration just my needs above anyone else's, that health care is, should be in the public good and that each, so that each person's health care needs are met. I feel that the Green Mountain Care should be able to keep Vermonters healthy. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Tracy Dorman. I'm a member of the Vermont Worker Center Health Care as a Human Right Campaign. I'm here today to share my story because the benefits discussion must start with people's health care needs and their ability to get the comprehensive, appropriate care required by Act 48. We need a health care system focused on care, not coverage. I'm a person with a disability with ongoing medical needs. I became an amputee at age 11 as a result of a birth defect. My prosthesis costs at minimum $10,000 to replace. I wear special socks with my prosthesis that cost $35 each. I also require therapies occasionally. I am now diabetic and take medications, et cetera. I cannot afford the costs of all these medical needs. I do have Medicare insurance that covers 80% of some things. I am currently not eligible for assistance from the state to cover the 20% of items not covered by Medicare. I just gave up my disability cash benefit to work full-time to become eligible for health care coverage through my employer. I don't know how long I can continue to do this. Each day is a struggle for me. The new health care benefits should include comprehensive care to include, to provide the health care benefits that I described above, and should also include dental vision and long-term care. This is my story, but I don't want you to choose my needs over anyone else's. I'm here because we must treat health care as a public good, so each of us gets the care that we need. Green Mountain Care's job is to keep people of Vermont healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear now from the first person in Brattleboro?
Hi. I'm Catherine Martin. I'm here today talking from three different views. I have been an EMT. I have been that hard-to-diagnose patient. And I'm also a usability engineer, which is somebody who studies human error and designs around it, so tools and environments and systems fit humans better. Today, I bring to you a bit of Bill Waterson's comments, which I must acknowledge this presentation I'm about to give would be defunct and void without, so I just want to make note of that. And the reason I've chosen this first slide with the treehouse is because this is segregation. Nobody wants this. Nobody wants to be segregated in a different group and be separated out. So, that's a lot of what I'm going to focus on today, because to me, it's not necessarily the specific benefits, it's how we approach the whole system at large. So, for-profit is one of the main problems that have gotten us here today. We have sick that pay more, we have well that pay less, which have segregated out a section of the population who have no ability to cover themselves. It's too expensive. We have underinsurance, and we have poor preventative care. Oops, wrong computer. Basically, this means we have a system which meets our wants, but not our needs. For-profit sells to individuals, and individuals purchase based on want, not necessarily need. So, this is one of the things that I'm going to request, that we take out of our single-payer health care. It's great that we're going to a single payer. It's definitely where we need to go. It takes a lot of the problems out of the system, but not all of them, because it's very hard to understand when your paycheck is connected to this concept of not understanding what's good for the public good.
So, I apologize, but your two minutes are up, and we need to go to the second person from Brattleboro. But please feel free to send us your presentation to, directly to us, so we can see it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carolyn Drumsta, and I'm part of the Vermont Worker Center and the Health Care as a Human Right Campaign. In a recent health care listening session activity, we were asked to choose between vision and dental care. Now, the human body is a complicated thing. It is useful to divide it into systems cared for by various specialists, but we must remember that these distinctions are entirely artificial and that health care is ultimately holistic. We ignore this fact at our own peril. For instance, germs in a poorly maintained mouth will readily travel to the heart and cause bacterial endocarditis, that is to say that a potentially life-threatening condition could have been prevented by annual dental cleanings. But I have a more personal example of how failing to care for selected basic needs can lead to disaster. A few months ago, my sister began to notice that she was losing her peripheral vision, so she did what anyone with coverage would do. She went to her optometrist. As it turns out, her vision problem wasn't a vision problem at all, but a tumor pressing against her optic chiasma. Much to our relief, the doctors believe it to be benign, though it could eventually become malignant. But thanks to an optometrist, we at least know. I shudder to think what might have happened to my sister in a Green Mountain Care that doesn't provide vision care. When she first noticed her vision loss, she would do what most people without care do: ignore the problem and hope that it goes away. During those months or years of wishful thinking, the tumor may have become cancerous, and for all we know, she might have died for what began as a minor problem easily detected by an eye doctor. Mind you, I am not arguing for vision and dental care at the expense of other services. If anything, my sister's story and her hypothetical alternative outcome should serve as a warning against cherry-picking health care services. Toddological as this may sound, the truth is that we don't know what sort of care we need until we need it. And as such, the only benefits package we should be discussing is the as-needed package, for only this treats health care as a human right. Thank you.
Can we hear now from the first person in Lindenville? And I would mention that we have David Reynolds, Deputy Commissioner of Health Care Administration in Lindenville.
Hi. My name is Cheryl McKee, and I'm from St. Johnsbury, Vermont. I'm a member of the Health Care Human Rights Campaign and the Vermont Worker Center. I went to the dentist a couple weeks ago, and because I had lost a filling, and I found out that I needed a root canal. Out of 15% sliding fee scale, the cost of the first visit and the x-rays was $35, which is a good portion of my monthly income, and I took it from one bill to another to try to pay that. What I found out in the appointment is that I needed the root canal, and the cost for the root canal, which would be $1,000. For me, as a single mom, that's nearly two months' income. So, I left there in tears, and because I couldn't afford it, the dentist tried to convince me that I should pull the tooth, which didn't need to be done. And after a lifetime of lack of dental coverage, and I have already been in this position and had to pull teeth that could have been fixed again if I could afford it, and I can't afford to lose any more teeth. I shouldn't have to choose between eating and a home. I need dental care, but some people are in the same situation with getting vision care they need for treatment, or for treatment for mental health or substance abuse issues. With Green Mountain Medical Care, which I have, we have an opportunity to create a health care system whose purpose is actually to take care of people and make them healthy. This starts with having a comprehensive, appropriate care so that people can make decisions based on what they actually need to stay healthy. This also means that all types of care are a part of the system, including dental, vision, mental health, and long-term care. Thank you.
Is there a second person in Linden?
Yes, hello. My name is Anne Traverso-More, and I live in Calijonia County. And I'd like to thank the members of the Green Mountain Care Board as we work out the details for the benefits for Act 48. I am a member of the Northeast Kingdom Community Action Agency Board of Directors, and I'm also a member of the Health Care as a Human Right Campaign in Vermont. And I have an opportunity to work with lots of people, because I teach at two different colleges in Vermont. And that's what a little bit about my testimony today. Over the years, I've met many, many students who have had difficulty getting dental care for themselves, and I think that that's something that I hope as we work towards the details, that we ensure that we have health care for folks, and it ties into the idea of a comprehensive health program. And I think one thing is I know that our legislators are very dedicated to this, because they adopted the language of the human rights principles, and part of it is, you know, universal access, and I think that's very important. I know one thing that we have found out from research is that good medicine involves preventative care, routine screenings, and that treatments need to be holistic and complete in scope. So, a person's primary health care provider should be able to connect all of their patients to the specialists that they need, and also to encourage them to take care of their teeth and looking to their vision care, and it should all be part of a program as we move forward. I know for myself that I have always had the benefit of very good, comprehensive care myself through my employees, and it has been a very expensive thing for both my employees and for me. I've also known that if I really had a serious health crisis and I had to leave my job, that shortly after that, I would lose, I would lose coverage as well, and this has never made a lot of sense to me. So, I hope that...
Thank you. I'm going to have to ask you to sum up, because we now need to move to Middlebury.
Okay. So, well, thank you very much for your dedication this year on working out these details.
Thank you. Could we hear now from the first person in Middlebury?
Hello. My name is Heath Heskock. I'm 27 years old, and I was born and raised in Vermont. My story is about two comparable injuries that I experienced, one in the U.S. and one in Canada where I attended college. While living in British Columbia College, Canada, I injured my ankle very badly. I went to a walk-in clinic with no appointment at 9:00 a.m., sat in a waiting room for about 20 minutes, and then was examined by a doctor who told me to call a nearby x-ray facility. I got my ankle x-rayed the following morning. I then returned to the clinic the following day after the doctor had examined the x-rays. He told me that my ankle was badly sprained and to stay on the crutches for three to four weeks and come back if it wasn't healing properly. Sure enough, a month later, I was walking, albeit slowly, and was well on my way to a full recovery. I had two doctor's visits, an x-ray, and I never even received a bill. I repeat, I never even received a bill. Compare that, if you will, to when I injured myself while skiing in Vail, where I was living at the time. I cut my chin skiing and went to the emergency room, and after 20 minutes, I went to see the doctor. I got five stitches and an appointment to come back a week later to get them out. Two weeks later, after the stitches had been removed and a very expensive dentist's visit, I got a huge envelope in the mail. It was an incredibly complex bill from my insurance company. I don't remember the exact details of the bill, nor what was said during the numerous hours I spent on the phone with my insurance company. What I do remember perfectly well was a feeling of frustration as I nearly broke down and cried as I tried to decipher the bill. I had a type of high-deductible insurance, which my mother thankfully paid at around $350 a month. I ended up paying $700, and I believe the hospital, not my insurance company, contributed several hundred dollars as well. The expensive hospital bill and the $1,000 dental bill were quite difficult to handle, but dealing with the insurance company was absolutely miserable. I feel that every Vermonter ought to receive affordable, decent health care and dental provided under a single-payer system. I feel this way for many reasons, but the essential reason is that I cannot imagine anything more immoral than a for-profit health care system. Thank you very much for your time.
Second person in Middlebury?
Good afternoon. My name is George Cloke. I live in Bedford, Vermont. I have been in the business ministry for 51 years. I'm now retired. From my own experience and the shared experience of other clergy, I have had ample opportunity to learn about people's struggles to obtain needed care, to maintain good health. With more time, I could tell many stories, but here is just one. Years ago, I had a parishioner who was in her early 30s and had a chronic disease that needed regular maintenance. She had good health insurance that was keeping, keeping her able to work and enjoy a fairly normal life. And then her employer closed the plant where she worked. She was about to lose her job and her insurance, maybe even her life, without needed health care. For millions of people in her situation, there is no answer in our present system, but my young parishioner then had a chance. Her employer offered a job in a distant city in another state. With that job, she could maintain her health insurance. She sold the house she had grown up in, left friends and family, and moved. What a sacrifice, and totally unnecessary if we had a different way of providing opportunity for people to care for themselves. With time, I could tell dozens of stories of individuals and families who, with their own best efforts, could not maintain their health and suffered unnecessarily in our present system, in which health care choices are most often made by private insurance companies. And I would talk about what I have witnessed in other countries, where my wife and I have friends and relatives who are proud of their health care systems, like it is in Canada. I would talk about my experience in an emergency room in Scotland, where I, as a foreigner, received good care without any charge. I am grateful that we have leaders in Vermont who are working to make a fair system that provides care for everyone, no one left out, and I thank the members of the Green Mountain Care Board. I believe you are on the right track, doing a good job of working towards that goal. Thank you.
We will hear now from our first speaker in Montpelier.
Hello. I'm Ed Paquin, and I'm speaking today for the Coalition for Disability Rights, Vermont Coalition for Disability Rights. You folks should be looking at reforming our insurance system. Your benefits package is going to probably be broad in terms of what we think of as conventional insurance. What I'm hoping that you'll do is pay attention to the needs that are particular to people with disabilities. I would agree with what we've heard from the speakers before me in those peculiar needs. I think what's important to remember is that parts of our system work very well for acute care. Long-term care has different issues. People with disabilities almost always need sort of different kinds of long-term care, some of which are well-delivered in the medical model, some of which are delivered by our community mental health, our developmental services, our choices for care system. So, I think you need to figure out how reimbursement is going to work well to provide all of these needs. The money is there. We have a pretty good delivery system in Vermont. I think it's important that we watch the infrastructure, such as community mental health, such as developmental services, so that we don't design a payer system that gives us an excellent acute care system and ignores our long-term care needs. As one small example, I think in the news, the decision is being made in Rutland to close a rehab unit, something which I can relate to, having been a veteran of rehab units. And I got to tell you, it's very different to get rehab in a particular unit than it is in a nursing home, as an example. So, I think our system has to make the payer, whatever you come up with for a delivery system and for a payment system, it has to take those long-term needs into account, and the needs are very different for people with long-term disabilities than it is for people who have just particular acute needs, because we have both of those. And I think I'll leave it there for two minutes.
John, you're up.
Oh, good. I'm John Block, and for the past 45 years, I've been working in Vermont with at-risk populations. That population has exploded. It's exploded because of the economic policies of this country, and therefore, I hope we go to the tenants that built this state, that we are all members of the union, this union being Vermont. And therefore, coverage should be broad, comprehensive, and we will see an upsurge, my belief, in economic development of small and medium-sized companies. I think also, we need to keep a very close eye on mental health. On my last positions, I worked on a grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation on depression. All I'll tell you is, we didn't have to look far for constituents to participate. We had problems with bureaucracy, but that's something you all are equipped to deal with. I am proud to know three of the members on this board, and I have the utmost trust that they will do what is needed. And I hope it is a broad recognition that we're the second-oldest state in the union, and this raises a whole bunch of problems that I won't go into. I'm pretty good today. I'm not limping. But we get long-term issues with aging, and I don't know how you get around it. I know there are ways to deal with it, and I would be happy at some time to share with the board this issue, because it's going to bankrupt us if we don't get a handle on it. I'm not talking about the general health problem, I'm talking about the aging problem and what it presents. I watched World War II and flood the public schools, because nobody believed the demographics. So, we had trailers. We had rented office buildings, any place to stick kids and their parents. In the GI Bill, flooded the colleges. Nobody had prepared. I beg you to prepare for the onslaught of the geriatrics. I'm one of them.
Thank you. Can we hear now from the first person in Newport?
Hi. My name is Cindy Perrin, and I'm a member of the Health Care as a Human Right Campaign, and I live in Barton. I'm here to share my story today, because it is so important that we have benefits that are focused on taking care of people's whole well-being. When I was 25, I had a blood clot in my head, and from that day forward, my life has changed forever. To look at me, or to talk to me, or if you were to pass me on the streets, you wouldn't know the trauma I experienced, or the pain that I went through and continue to go through day in and day out. You wouldn't know that I went medically bankrupt with all the copays for my prescriptions that I took and continue to take, or the doctor's appointments that I've been to and continue to go to. You wouldn't be able to tell that I see a therapist each week to help me get through with my day-to-day life. Coping with physical pain is sometimes easier to manage than coping with the emotional pain, but no matter what, I don't have one without the other. A truly universal health care system must not only be universal in that everyone is in, but also universal in what is covered. People are whole human beings, and therefore, coverage must be holistic. Like in my situation, we can't treat the physical pain without also treating the emotional pain. We can't take care of the body without taking care of our teeth and our eyes. We can't cover some medications and not others, or some procedures and not others. This is my story, and I don't want to choose my needs over anyone else's, and I'm here because we must treat health care as a public good. Green Mountain Care's job is to keep the people of Vermont healthy, and not just the people whose needs fit into some definition of covered. We need a health care system that is truly universal. Thank you.
We hear from the second person in Newport?
Hi. My name is Chet Greenwood, and I'm from Derby, and I'm going against the grain a little bit on this. And I've, you're going to be hearing compelling stories all evening, and, you know, we should cover these people, some of them, they're very legitimate, but nobody brings me up to question of how we're going to pay for these. And I do think that we can fix health care. I just don't think this is the right way to do it. And I do not work for insurance companies, and I do not work for the health care industry. I'm an accountant and a financial analyst for a manufacturer, and I'm concerned about the businesses leaving the state, because the 14.5% payment tax assessment is greater than what a lot of companies pay for their employees' health care now. And one of the disturbing factors in the Northeast Kingdom is, you know, we have about 16,500 people working in Northeast Kingdom. That's Orleans and Essex County. They have 8% unemployment. And if you eliminate the ERISA companies, the federal employees, the state employees, and the teachers that are currently exempt from GMHC, then that leaves about 80% of the remaining employees are qualified for the 400% federal poverty level of tax credits and/or subsidies. So, they're going to be decoupled from their employers. So, we're going to have, most of our employees in Northeast Kingdom are going to be on their own. And that brings me to another point. We've had Act 48, one of the claims, I hear time, one of the claims was that the 30% cost of administration was too high, but this board is getting way more administrative costs than anybody in the private enterprise. And if you don't do any paperwork, you're going to open up a can of worms for fraud and abuse.
Time.
Okay. That's it.
That was the real deal. Thank you. We will now hear from our first speaker in Rutland.
Is it me? Okay. Hi. This is Jeff Lenberg. I'm the Executive Directors of Vermonters for Health Care Freedom. The opportunities of average Vermonters to offer comments and testimony in this critical issue have been sparse, and while your stated purpose is to receive comments on the basic benefits, it is our view that this is not the question that should be asked today. Vermonters should have been engaged in a discussion of the scope, pace, and structure of health care reform prior to the enactment of Act 48. view that this is not the question that should be asked today. Vermonters should have been engaged in a discussion of the scope, pace, and structure of healthcare reform prior to the enactment of Act 48. The governor and legislature have already made these decisions. To now come to the people for guidance on benefits is to make this exercise somewhat as cynical public relations. What we're engaged in here is a magician's trick, a sleight of hand. With the flourish, the magician draws our eyes toward the unimportant as a distraction from what he does not want us to observe. The fact is, basic benefits have been defined by the legislature. They will at least match those offered by Catamount. Estimating the cost of Catamount, counting 400, covering 430,000 lives is a straightforward calculation, just ask Wendy Wilton. There's no good reason why Catamount, which serves as a benefit baseline, cannot also serve as a financial baseline. But the administration refuses to do the analysis and to discuss what Green Mountain Care will cost, how it will be financed, or who will pay the bill. In the end, the benefits package will be dictated by the legislature and finances, not by the testimony heard here today. The closure of Rutland's inpatient rehabilitative services unit is not the result of the public's desire for benefits, it is the result of the state's finances. And this is just the beginning. Contrary to what single-payer advocates believe, the consequence of global budgets and total state control will be to restrict access, not to expand it. So while these good people here offer testimony today and hope that their concerns and desires will be heard, this exercise serves the purpose of drawing our attention away from the finances, which will ultimately decide the benefits and the level of access that Vermonters will or will not have to those services. Thank you.
We hear from the second person in Rutland, please.
I am Joan Eckley from West Haven, Vermont, and I'm testifying today on the need for some alternative coverage in the Green Mountain Care plan. I have a spinal cord injury from whiplash car accidents that is not fully treatable by current medical practice. I'm in chronic pain in my shoulders and upper back, and my left arm is significantly atrophied. Along with muscle relaxers and prescription non-narcotic pain patches, I have monthly trigger point injections on my shoulders and upper back. My naturopathic doctor uses lidocaine and anesthetic and serapine, a derivative of the pitcher plant, which is used as a nerve block. Before I found out about this treatment, I was in agony and had zero quality of life. With the injections, I am able to enjoy life with manageable levels of pain. Now, my naturopathic doctor's medical malpractice has informed him that he can no longer do trigger point injections, so he is attempting to find another person to do it while he supervises. All of this, I pay out of pocket. Medicare used to cover these injections, but has now deemed them experimental. There are millions in this country who have spinal cord injuries but are not being treated the way I have chosen. They suffer on narcotics which don't work, and can no longer care for themselves and live in misery. This is so unnecessary. We need full coverage for this, as well as vision, hearing, and dental care. I have worked almost four years in the Health Care as a Human Right Campaign and strongly believe that we need to have a good, single-payer, full-coverage system in the state of Vermont. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we hear from the first person in Springfield, please?
Hi, we do have one speaker. Our technician is, there you go. There you go.
Hi, my name is Deb Charlie Baker. I'm a member of the Hearing Loss Association of America. I'm also on the Board of Disability Rights Vermont, and I'm the chair of the Hearing Aid Task Force. Hearing loss is an invisible condition that affects between 10% and 17% of the general population along all age groups. We're talking about 36 million Americans, we're talking about over 65,000 Vermonters are affected adversely by hearing loss. We're seeing an increased prevalence of hearing loss in teens and young adults due to noise exposure. Hearing loss is not just an inconvenience, but untreated, it's a serious health issue. Even mild hearing loss results in people experiencing chronic tension, anxiety, fatigue, loss of confidence, strained relationships, both personal and on the job, errors on the job, underemployment, and job loss. So it is a serious impact. This leads to withdrawal from social interactions, increasing isolation, depression, and hypertension. By treatment, I'm talking about provision of hearing aids and also oral rehabilitation. Unfortunately, it's estimated that currently only one person in seven who has hearing loss is able to access treatment. Overwhelmingly, what we hear is that people are unable to afford the hearing aids, $4,000, $6,000, $8,000 for a pair of hearing aids, simply out of the reach of a lot of people. So, and insurance coverage is extremely rare. Most people who need treatment continue to suffer needlessly without treatment. Insurance coverage is essential for ensuring the health and the well-being of all Vermonters affected by hearing loss. I urge you to include this in your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we hear from the first person in St. Albans, please?
Yes, I'm here to speak primarily, I guess preaching to the choir, but there's a few points that I would like to make. First of all, I'm against deductibles. I hope that the plan does not include deductibles. Copays are perfectly all right if they're needed to control the access or the abuse, to discourage abuse. But deductibles are not okay, because people avoid going to the doctor until the situation is complicated and far harder to treat. As everybody has said, dental, vision, and hearing and mental should be covered. I realize that that would be a large cost, but at least the dental in the beginning could be preventative, all preventative care being taken care of. And once that has made an effect in the population, then maybe they could afford to take care of the implants or the dentures or whatever further work needs to be done. Eyes in hearing, probably best part I could say is that the cost be shared for the devices, glasses and hearing aids, and that way that the plan could control costs by negotiating with the providers. And my other concern is that the dollars go to the providers and not to insurance companies. They deserve the money if there's any dollars available, and I'm afraid that Vermont being a small state, we could lose our providers if we don't pay them sufficiently. Thank you very much.
We hear from the second person in St. Albans?
I'm Volteer with the Worker Center, have been working with healthcare for the last 10 years with any organization that's willing to promote it. I consider myself as a patient to be a healthcare expert, because I've been a profit center for the healthcare industry for the last 10 years. I'm also here because I have found recently that life, or healthcare, like a box of chocolates, is a surprise, because you just don't know what you're going to get anymore. And as I've accessed healthcare over the years, I've noticed that they keep skimping on the healthcare. And they're putting people out there who are not doctors, who are practicing nurses, and they may be as good, but they're making substitutes. And when it comes to getting nurses involved, they're bringing in people who seem to lack the same experience that nurses have. I'd like to express my dying love for Fletcher Allen nurses, and I don't mean that in the biblical sense. I love Fletcher Allen nurses because their primary goal, or one of their primary goals, is patient safety. And right now, they're in negotiations with management of Fletcher Allen, who is wanting them to compromise on the number of staff that's available for the given number of patients. Unlike schools and a hospital setting, when you have a bad patient-to-nurse ratio, the result can be somebody's death. I'm also here because I need to represent people who can't be there for themselves. These are the people who pay the highest price for healthcare. They pay with their lives. Nationwide, approximately 45,000 people die every year because they can't afford healthcare. And as to, thank you very much.
Thank you. We would like to hear now from the first person in White River.
Hi, I'm Christine Arvizu from White River Junction. I'm a part of the Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. I'm talking about the need for dental care. I have not had good luck with my dental situation. Though I have been getting regular dental care for the past 60 years, during the past few years, the cost has been much higher than I could possibly afford. When I was employed, I had about $1,000 a year to spend for healthcare, for dental care, I mean, which basically almost maintained it. I'm sure you know it costs much more than $2,000 to fix just one tooth that needs a root canal and crown. I have had numerous teeth break. The option of having dentures is expensive also. I have some old partial dentures which do not fit well, and it makes it impossible for me to chew properly, thus affecting my nutrition. I do not have the option of going into serious debt to have teeth, as my son is in college and I need to contribute towards his expenses, as well as to keep my credit score up so I will qualify for parent loans. So the choice I've had to make is not being able to chew so my son can go to college. I really don't think anyone should have to make that choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Robert Spotswood, and I'm president of North Star Counseling in Norwich, Vermont. I'm also a member of Healthcare as a Human Right Campaign, because I'd like to see comprehensive benefits that make healthcare accessible for our communities. What I have to say about benefits has to do with preventing barriers to treatment needed to keep people healthy. Copays are a barrier, as they encourage people to weigh the cost of getting treatment they need. Deductibles are a barrier for the same reason. In the interest of full disclosure, I should add that my family moved here from Ontario, Canada, and moving from universal, single-payer to this current system, in terms of access to family healthcare, was like moving from Florence Nightingale to Vlad the Impaler. When a child has ear pain, no parent should be weighing any cost to having that child seen. Fortunately, this is Vermont, and we can do Florence here. Briefly, I believe there's no such thing as a healthcare consumer. That is a fiction we've grown up with, and people in other countries laugh out loud at our gullibility. There are only human beings, us, who predictably will need care throughout our lifetimes when and where we need it. Care that accounts for our whole bodies and minds, not one that cuts ourselves into discreet sections or permits barriers to accessing that care. Thank you.
We'll go now to Williston. Commissioner Harry Chen, the Commissioner of Health, is in Williston, and also the Commissioner of the Department of Vermont Health Access, Mark Larson, will be joining us later. Can we hear from the first person in Williston, please?
Hi, my name is Anna Marie Bonanno, and I'm a member of Vermont Worker Center and the Healthcare as a Human Right Campaign. Currently, I have Catamount Blue Health coverage. While sometimes I find it difficult to afford all of the medications I need each month, generally speaking, Catamount is a decent plan. I am nervous, though, that down the road, as I get older, I will need new eyeglasses or dental work, like getting a crown or a root canal. Right now, these things are not covered by my plan, and I'm not sure that I could afford them. I am already in debt because of dental care, and I'm afraid that if I needed more dental care, I would not be able to get it or pay for it. I also think it is important that we include all forms of healing, including chiropractic work, massage therapy, and acupuncture, as well as all of the other conventional medical care. To me, it is important that we include all of the medical needs of our community without excluding any. That's what it means to have healthcare as a human right. Thank you.
Next, in Williston?
Good, well, thank you for your comments. I agree with you about the coverage in the broad sense that you outlined it. Hello, my name is Jeffrey Haslett. I'm a member of the Vermont Worker Center and the state coordinator for the We the People Congress and Constitutional Lobby. Article number 20 of our Vermont Constitution gives we the people a right to petition our government, or to instruct their representatives at this hearing, that's you. So we the people are petitioning you to invest public money, i.e. tax-based funding, into keeping our population healthy with no out-of-pocket personal costs for universal access to comprehensive and medically necessary healthcare services, including dental, vision, and long-term care, and all the other things that you mentioned as well. As required by Act 48, we the people further petition you for a fully publicly funded healthcare system focused on care for people, not coverage based on profits for corporations. Article 1 of our Vermont Constitution states that all persons are born equal and have certain natural, i.e. physical, inherent, i.e. attributes, and unalienable, i.e. not to be taken away, rights, amongst which are the enjoying, i.e. good health, and defending life, i.e. healthcare, is a human right. And the gentleman earlier that commented about finances as a means, I couldn't agree more, but the end is healthcare. So the question I would end with all of you is, who are you going to really represent? Are you going to represent us, the people, or some sort of an interest that might not be known to us? As that gentleman was suspect that there are things happening behind the scenes that might sidetrack the effort to bring universal healthcare. Thank you. Very much.
We'll go back now to Bennington. Are there additional folks in Bennington to hear from?
Yes.
Yes, I guess, wait.
Okay, maybe we can hear from the first person, please.
Yes, hello, I'm Dr. Mark DiQuillik, chiropractor, Bennington. Since we first started hearing the words "healthcare crisis," I felt that healthcare shouldn't be a primary, should not be primarily a business with a profit motive, because it is above all, a human right and a public good. The ideal outcome of this exercise would be to increase the health of all Vermonters while decreasing the uncontrolled cost by creating a fundamentally different, more efficient approach to healthcare, true solution-oriented, patient-centered healthcare. Chiropractors currently receive some referrals from some PC, primary care physicians, decreasing their workload while increasing patient satisfaction. We're available to the public without a referral, but still, we see just a small percentage of the population, while back, neck, pain, and headache remain a very large cost to the system. So we are underutilized by the system and available to fill the growing need. Vermonters are practical people. They appreciate being able to call and get right in for a correction so they can get on with their chores. Chiropractic is ideally suited for primary care for the common musculoskeletal condition. As a physician trained to make a diagnosis based on observation, history, and exam, often the pain generator can be found and corrected quickly. The United States Agency for Healthcare Policy and Research has studied acute low-back pain and has recommended manipulation as the primary pain-relieving technique. As of yet, this has not resulted in protocol. Postural and ergonomic remedies are addressed, and specific exercise and stretching prescriptions are given and retested to prevent recurrence. We are ideally situated in the middle of the spectrum, making referrals for additional testing to medical, mental health, and CAM providers when needed. Being drugless, we're able to correct presenting complaints while limiting the significant downside to prescription drugs, dependency, doctor shopping, and abuse. So being corrective, drug-free, non-surgical, and preventative, full implementation of this valuable tool should result in significant savings to the system. A couple of ideas, pilot projects in each geographic area and each broad area of specialty. Also, health coaching. We are in a uniquely qualified position as wellness experts. Patient education, a critical component of any successful health plan, is most effectively done through listening, encouragement, motivation, activation, promoting patient responsibility and satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Garish. I'm from Bennington, and I am a member of the Healthcare as a Human Right Campaign. I'm also a lay member of the Bennington Interfaith Council, and it's as much in that capacity as in the Healthcare as a Human Right capacity that I asked to speak with you today. As you may or may not know, the Bennington Interfaith Council is the originator of the Bennington Free Health Clinic, as well as the food bank here in Bennington. Many people are seen at the Free Health Clinic, many of them have absolutely no other way to get healthcare. Many of them... Many of them are also insured, but they cannot get healthcare. And so in considering benefits, I think we need to have a paradigm shift, because we're talking about healthcare, not health insurance. And when I say people with health insurance cannot get healthcare, that is specifically because of deductibles, benefit packages, and copays. So when we're talking about health insurance, there's a particular package of benefits that you get. Otherwise, you don't get it. When we're talking about healthcare, we're talking, as many other people have described, about the whole body and treating the whole person, whether through alternative medical techniques or traditional medical techniques. Dental is a very good example of this, and I just, as an aside, want to say that I've heard that many dentists have said they don't feel there is an unmet need for dentistry amongst our population. But not only from the standpoint of the free clinic, but our community meetings, which the state assisted us in recently. The poverty group, the very first thing that they unanimously decided needed to be done here in Bennington, was to try and set up a free dental clinic, because many people are... Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear now from Brattleboro?
Hello, my name is Kate Farrington. Some of you may remember me from public hearings last year. I told you about my health issue and how I did not have the coverage to take care of it. Unfortunately, the situation has not changed. My doctor did not find an effective treatment, and I still have to deal with daily pain. My current coverage only covers one annual women's health visit. Due to my condition, I am still at risk of being unable to bear children. If I tried to see someone for reproductive health outside of the allotted annual visit, my insurance will not cover it. This insurance is through one of the biggest providers in the country and one of the largest providers of student health insurance in the Northeast. Since I am not covered under a parent or employer insurance plan, I am required by my school to buy into their health insurance. They only offer two packages. To save what little I can, I opted for the basic plan, which requires me to pay nearly $4,000 a year. This is the total amount of work-study I receive during the school year. The rest of my income is loans. Also, my copays are $30 for doctor's office and ER visits, and between $10 and $45 for prescriptions. Going to the ER isn't actually an option. When I did, only 60% of my bill was covered, even though the company claims that coverage is closer to 90%. Trying to see a specialist about my condition is not an option either, because that too will not be covered. As a student, I do not have the money to pay out-of-pocket. Women are the largest floating block in this country, yet women's health coverage is under assault. But this is only one issue. If we establish our universal healthcare to be exactly like the insurance system we use now, then we are only upholding a broken system. Instead, we should establish care separate from how much someone is able to pay in. We should provide coverage for any health service that people need, both preventative and non-preventative. We have the chance to change this here and now. Thank you.
I am Margaret Newton. I am a physician, retired. I'm an internist and geriatrician. I practiced for 43 years, mostly in Wisconsin, but some in Vermont. I am a member of the Vermont Concerned Citizens for Health, and I am a member of the National Physicians, Physicians for a National Health Plan and Vermont Chapter. The basic requirements that have been outlined in Act 48 include universal access, patient-centered approach, high-quality coordinated care, continuous coverage not coupled to employment, affordable to enrollees and to the state of Vermont, the state in terms of its costs, a basic benefits plan that is available to all Vermonters, improvement in health outcomes where possible, control and control of unaffordable escalating costs which our society and state cannot tolerate, and transparency. The benefits design, in my opinion, should include a listing of various categories of healthcare that were shown in the PowerPoint listening session. First of all, evidence-based care whenever possible. Evidence is not always easy to find in certain conditions or mixture. Preference-sensitive care with quality of life and cost consideration factored in. Cost sharing should be included. What should be avoided is supply-sensitive care, which is that kind of care when there's a surplus of certain kinds of physicians, like general surgeons, and then too many more hernias done than are needed. Transparency regarding the limitations of treatment and cost is something that needs to be discussed between physicians and patients. I have a report which I'll file. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the first person in Lyndenville?
Good afternoon, I'm Betty Keller, Dr. Betty Keller from St. Johnsbury. What benefits you say are offered are only as good as their availability, so it's essential that you develop the system to make it easier to provide healthcare in Vermont so that providers will continue to provide care. As a provider, I found myself overwhelmed with patients who did not improve as much as desired because they needed more assistance, and overwhelmed with no personal or family time for me, because I was staying late calling patients to check up with them after I was done seeing patients for the day. I would like to see benefits to include case management, nutrition and diabetes education, physical therapy, and mental health and substance abuse services. To increase convenience and conserve resources, I would like to see benefits include telephone consultation and follow-up for all patients, as well as home visits for those who clearly need hands-on care and for whom getting out is a barrier, such as an illness, disability, and postpartum. All these are provided in the United Kingdom's health services, reducing healthcare costs in the long run. I hope to see all Vermonters obtain such services, even if their providers choose not to participate in the Blueprint for Health. The challenge of obtaining mental health services has been particularly concerning to me as I advocate for a family member with mental illness. Once a person has been hospitalized, that person should never have their access limited by a copay or any other charge for a mental health service again, including therapy, social services, and medication. Insurance companies have no motivation to cover them well, because those who use them are often unable to advocate for themselves. Family members may be reluctant to publicize the problem due to stigma, and the insurance company can figure that there's no investment in it for them. Once people with mental illness deteriorate and lose their jobs, they'll be dropped from the insurance. His or her life can fall apart by the time they lose their job, and not only have they lost their sense of self-worth and self-efficacy, but even their sense of who they are. Because depression and anxiety can both be barriers to accessing healthcare, we must search for ways to bring the care to people suffering from these challenges. Peer services and mobile crisis units have great potential, and I urge you to include such services in the benefits package with no copay. Finally, I would like to advocate for the cost of assessment for learning disabilities and psychological testing to not be in school budgets but to be paid for through healthcare. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dr. Alice Silverman. I'm a psychiatrist. I live and work for the past 20 years in St. Johnsbury, in a variety of practice and employment settings, including as a salary doctor employed by the local community mental health center and hospital, and more recently, as a self-employed private practitioner. The challenges of psychiatric practice in a rural and underserved part of the state are great, but those of us who do it love it. The challenges need not be exacerbated, as they currently are, by the fractured financing system, which, as you know, consists of a combination of private employer-sponsored insurance, Catamount, health, Medicaid, Medicare. In this system, reimbursement and insurance and the provider that patients are allowed to see can change frequently with each change in employment or income. This non-system leads to interruptions in care and for the physician unpredictable reimbursement. In the rural areas, this is particularly challenging. It also places wasteful and time-consuming administrative burdens on clinicians and discriminates against lower-income Vermonters, as so many people have said, who forego care because of high copays and deductibles. This is a real obstacle to care. As you plan for a new system of healthcare financing, please pay careful attention to Vermont's commitment to parity in the treatment of mental illness and substance abuse. Although we have laws designed to prevent discrimination, the alarming lack of access to psychiatric mental health and substance abuse treatment for certain sectors of the population is striking and invisible, except to the families and friends of those suffering from these conditions. The Vermont Psychiatric Association did a recent survey of outpatient private psychiatrists who see many patients with new onset of moderate to severe illness, either after discharge from the hospital or when referred by a primary care physician. We found that most respondents turn away 100 to 150 patients every year because their practices are full. The effort to put mental health counselors and psych nurses in primary care settings is a step in the right direction, but often not adequate or sufficient to meet these patients' long-term needs. The shrinkage in the outpatient psychiatry workforce is a direct result of aggressive and burdens to managed care and insurance company practices, and inadequate and unpredictable reimbursement, and this can be remedied. Single payer? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear now from the first person in Middlebury?
Hi, my name is Dave Warful. I am a member of the Vermont Workers' Center and the Healthcare as a Human Right Campaign. Excuse me. Right now, I'm not too concerned with my own healthcare needs, but it wasn't always that way. In fact, I remember much of my past being full of stress and strain and worry due to my medical bills. Those days were dark and full of fear, that I would lose my house and everything else that I owned. Today, I am on Medicare, and beside a small payment for a Medicare policy, I pay nothing for my medical needs. What a relief. No more worries about technicalities preventing me from getting medical care. One day, I began to discharge a lot of blood and needed a colonoscopy. I got one, and the doctors discovered that I had precancerous polyps. In other words, if I did not get them removed, the situation would have evolved to where I would have cancer. If the polyps had not been discovered, then I doubt if I would be here today. My insurance company at the time said that I was two weeks short of being covered by them. I was left with a $20,000 hospital bill. The first thing I thought about was to sell my house. Then, with the bill, I got a form to fill out for being a hardship case. I filled it out and, you know, declared my income, assets, and other things. Two weeks later, I received a phone call from the hospital. My entire bill was forgiven. No person should have to go through the mental torture that this kind of situation produces. I still remember pretty vividly. It was really bad. So let us do the right thing. Let us lead a nation in a healthcare system that takes care of its people, including medical, dental, and vision care. It can be done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next person in Middlebury, please.
Hi, my name is Fred Barnes. I live in Middlebury. I'm a member of the Vermont Workers' Center and am also part of the Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. I was asked to briefly describe my life's experience with healthcare. I belong to a union of which I am still a member, that had a great healthcare insurance plan. If we had worked 600 hours or more, we had full coverage. After working that job for 20 years, I left to work as a musician. At this point, I was covered by my wife's Blue Cross and Blue Shield from the state of New Jersey. I might mention I had been sick most all of my life, and I've lost almost everything that I've worked for all of my life. This insurance was the best coverage possible. She was a schoolteacher in New Jersey. I was covered for massage twice a week. There was also coverage for mental health. My health was deteriorating all this time. However, looking back, it was a secure feeling, knowing doctor and hospital visits would be paid in full. Everyone deserves this type of care. I was totally disabled when I moved to Vermont, from New Jersey. At this time, I started receiving Social Security disability. My income was comprised of Social Security check and small pension, which may disappear soon. If this should happen, I would be totally unable to make any co-payments to Social Security. These recent years have been full of worry. If I accumulate a lot of debt because of sickness, I could lose my condo. My illness is stress-related, and this chronic worry has taken its toll on my health. To make things worse, my food stamps were recently reduced from $49 to $29 per month because of a cost of living increase in Social Security. I'm sure we all agree, good health sometimes comes with a price. Too many people will suffer from lack of medical care if we do not have a single payer system grounded in human rights. Living in the richest country in the world, we should have the best care, but we don't. This is why we must never give up our struggle for what every American needs and deserves, a single payer healthcare system for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn now to Montpelier.
Hi, my name is Patty McCarthy Metcalf, and I'm the Director of Friends of Recovery Vermont and Director of Operations at the Vermont Association for Mental Health and Addiction Recovery. And I'm also a person in long-term recovery, which for me means I haven't used alcohol or drugs in over 22 years. And I'm joining you here today to share our perspective on the benefit design of benefits that should be included in the single payer plan. Specifically, I'm recommending that the Green Mountain Care Board consider the inclusion of peer recovery supports for individuals and families with addiction and mental health conditions in the essential health benefits package. Now more than ever, there is a great emphasis on recovery from even the most serious mental illness, when persons have access in their communities to treatment and supports that are tailored to their needs. Recovery support services in Vermont include peer support specialists, peer recovery coaching, peer-led education and skill-building groups, relapse prevention, and other types of services that may be offered at peer-run recovery community centers. Some of these valuable services are provided through grant-funded programs. They are underfunded and unsustainable within the current system of care. In a letter of guidance to state Medicaid directors in 2007, it stated that states are increasingly interested in covering peer support providers as a distinct provider type for the delivery of counseling and other support services to Medicaid-eligible adults with mental illness and/or substance use disorders. Peer support services are an evidence-based mental health model of care, which consists of a qualified peer support provider who assists individuals in their recovery from mental illness and substance use disorders. CMS recognizes that the experiences of peer support providers as consumers of mental health and substance use services can be an important component in a state's delivery of effective treatment.
Time.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Finger. I'm the president of the Vermont Ambulance Association. Mark Considine is from Rescue Inc., is here with me today, and we have a full, complete written report to turn in, but I'm here to encourage you to ensure continued access to the ambulance services to the people of the state of Vermont. Ambulance services are a critical component of our healthcare system and provide medically necessary care. I urge you to state expressly that emergency and non-emergency ambulance transportation are included as part of the basic benefit package. We know that citizens will call for 911 and that the ambulance services will show up. We want to make sure that they continue to do that and that they know it's part of their basic care. In short, we think ambulance services and know are part of their basic safety net. In our report, we will give you full information from the American Ambulance Association with backup information that shows it is part of the federal agencies' outline, as well as part of the Institute of Medicine Care for defining a specific elements of an essential benefit package. It is covered by both Medicare and Medicaid already-covered service. We'll give you clarifying information, coverage for emergency services, including under Vermont since 1997, it's been included for emergency care with the Vermont Department of Banking and Insurance Commission's Rule 10, which makes sure there's access to emergency care 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and it also includes services for coverage of a prudent layperson's terms. We will also ask you to make sure, again, on the non-emergency side, because there are many benefits that in this state have to go from hospital to hospital, non-emergency has to be covered from facility to facility as well, to make sure that they get the care they need, and it's an essential benefit. Accordingly, the Green Mountain Care Board should also state expressly that non-emergency ambulance services are included in the basic package. Vermonters are dependent on the 90 ambulance services in this state, and we're proud to serve them in their time and need, and we thank you for the opportunity.
Can we hear now from the first person in Newport?
My name is Diane Peal, and I'm a registered nurse at North Country Hospital in Newport. I've been a nurse for 18 years, and I am also supporter of the Healthcare as a Human Right Campaign. My greatest concern is the tidal wave of obesity-related chronic illness, especially diabetes, that will be affecting younger and younger people over the next 20 years, most severely people of lower income. For this reason, I feel strongly that chronic disease prevention services should be covered completely under a Vermont healthcare plan, should be free of charge to all Vermonters, and should begin early in life, preferably in the womb. I was pleased to hear recently that the state of Oregon has received a grant for a radical new approach to healthcare that incorporates healthcare workers specifically designated to assist people with chronic illnesses. In Vermont, I would love to see obese... In Vermont, I would love to see obesity-related chronic illness prevention specialists working closely with individuals and families in each community to find creative, low-tech, cost-effective solutions to disease prevention. These specialists would not need to be brilliant diagnosticians nor be licensed to prescribe medication. They would need to be well-springs of useful, accurate information, good listeners, supportive, integrated into the community, and committed to staying with individuals and families for long term. This might sound expensive, but compare it to the cost of a lifetime of disability payments for people who will be losing their limbs in their 40s, to knee and hip replacement surgery in younger and younger individuals, and to the massive need for new kidney dialysis units, to name just a few of the consequences of failing to address obesity-related chronic illness early. Add to this that people disabled by chronic illness often can't earn wages, and therefore they don't pay taxes. And when you look at those things, prevention begins to look like the best healthcare bargain around. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second person in Newport? So can we... Yes? No? Can we turn now to Rutland?
Hello.
The first person? Thank you.
Am I on?
You're on.
Hello, my name is Ivan Smith. I'm from Fairhaven. I'm a member of the Vermont Workers Center Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. I come to these proceedings about the benefits of the Green Mountain Care with the hopes that the new system is as comprehensive as possible, a system where the standard is that of medical and/or quality-of-life necessity, a system that puts to rest the multi-tier package approach to healthcare finance and focuses on the unique needs of each individual. The health of the mind is no less important than that of the physical. The needs of people's dental care should not be played against vision care or other aspects of medicine, for they are just as important in realizing the health potential of our society as anything else. Drug dependency and rehab services should also be a priority for each person who needs it. I also implore this honorable board to respect and support medically-proven aspects of alternative medicine and holistic care, types of care, healthcare that has showed results but has not always gotten the respect of the old regimes of healthcare finance. As for me personally, I have been blessed when it comes to health and healthcare in spite of my, shall we say, less-than-stellar habits. I have come across in my travels people not as fortunate as me, and the current system only made their lives worse medically and/or financially. I remember when even having what was touted as a first-rate insurance plan with a multinational corporation and not being able to get what the doctors I had wanted for me. Too many people are left out, priced out, and too many things are not covered in a system that should have died long ago. This madness has to stop. You, the right honorable board, and those who are sent to the People's House of Vermont must emphasize care over purse coverage, need over greed, by making healthcare a public good and a human right. Thank you.
Thank you. Second person in...
Hello. My name is Erin McGraw-Pershaw-Skey, and I am a member of the Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. I am here today to emphasize that the benefits debate needs to be about care, not coverage. Although I personally have been lucky enough to be covered under private insurance for most of my life, I know many people who have not, and they affect me and everyone in Vermont. As a high school teacher, I know many students who do not have health insurance. Although many people in Vermont think that children under 18 are covered in Vermont, this is actually a misconception. Dr. Dinosaur does cover many children, but it is not universal since it requires an application. If families know about Dr. Dinosaur, and the sad truth is, many do not, families must meet income requirements, as I'm sure you know. Even when they do meet these income requirements, some families are still not willing to pay the monthly premiums. Many children, through no fault of their own, are left without insurance because of one of these situations, and they suffer the consequences. One such student was having trouble with attendance, and when I asked her about it, she said that she had been sick for two months. I asked her whether she had seen a doctor, and she said she hadn't because she doesn't have health insurance. She was more afraid of the cost than she was of the illness. Her situation is more common than we'd like to think. Teachers often have to work with students outside of class when they are dealing with illnesses that are preventable or that got treated late. Ill students are legitimately distracted from their studies, and they cannot take advantage of their education. They get further and further behind in their studies, and they too often feel like failures, become jaded with school, and sometimes even drop out. They feel that the system is not taking care of them, so why should they work hard for the system? Ironically, society often ultimately does pay for healthcare for these people. It's called Medicaid, or unfortunately, sometimes actually prison. Not only are we paying societal costs for our lack of healthcare coverage, but we also ultimately pay for these people's healthcare when they end up in emergency rooms for preventable illnesses. I can't emphasize enough how much I believe in preventative care. All right. They feel... Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in Springfield?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Then we will hear from St. Albans.
My name is Paula Schramm. I've been a resident of Venusburg Falls for the last 40 years. My story is typical of a lot of Vermonters who work in agriculture or logging and are self-employed. I worked on a dairy farm. I did sugaring, and for 14 years had my own logging and firewood business. For 25 of those years, I had no health insurance because I couldn't afford it. I've always taken responsibility for my health, live an active life, and eat well, and I've been very lucky to stay healthy all these years. When Vhap was established, I enrolled as soon as I could and felt that wonderful sense of relief that I finally had some backup for healthcare should I need it. Nothing much changed. I didn't run out and consume lots of healthcare, though I did get an annual physical. The one really helpful thing was to have some basic dental and eye exam coverage, as well as eyeglasses every two years if necessary. I finally started getting annual teeth cleanings and dental checkups and occasional fillings. I strongly recommend to include these basics, as well as hearing care and mental health care, as part of any coverage, because they are proactive, they save money, they're very necessary to maintaining good health. Most recently, I worked for a small family-owned machine shop for six years, and as the business grew, we all got health insurance plans, to which we all contributed. When the recession in 2000 affected the business, we had to cut back our hours and drop the health insurance. Once more, there was Vhap to fall back on, but I worried whenever making the change because there was a waiting period where you had no coverage. I will always be grateful for Vhap because it was there when I needed it. I suddenly had an attack of appendicitis and had an appendectomy, which was straightforward and basic procedure, and cost $10,000. If I had been between insurances, I would have had a bill that would have taken me many years to pay off. Now I'm 65, I'm on Medicare, but I still want the same good, comprehensive healthcare for everyone else that I'm getting now and that I had on Vhap. I've been working for this goal for Vermont for 17 years, and I'm glad that we're almost there. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have another person in St. Albans, so we will hear now from White River.
Okay. My name is Robert Recusen. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist, and I've been in practice in the Upper Valley since 1975. I'm here to encourage the board to consider three things related to people who suffer from emotional disorders. First, please avoid the dualistic approach to medical care that separates mental from physical illness. We now have overwhelming evidence to demonstrate that serious mental illnesses are characterized by abnormalities of the brain. From a scientific perspective, these conditions should be seen as disorders of the brain, just like diabetes is a disorder involving malfunction of the pancreas. I'm arguing for parity in providing services for people who happen to suffer from a disorder of a body organ, the activity of which is responsible for the phenomenon known as the mind. Second, please recognize the level of disease burden caused by psychiatric disorders in our population. For example, we know that by age 18, approximately 20% of Vermont youngsters will experience at least one episode of major depression. We also know that death by suicide is the third-leading cause of mortality among Vermont teenagers, and that 90% of the teens who die by suicide were suffering from depression prior to their deaths. And we also know that the majority of young people who suffer from depression never receive a proper diagnosis or adequate treatment. The primary reason for this, in my view, is the lack of access to benefits that is necessary to provide good care. Finally, please consider the cost of not providing equal benefits for those suffering from psychiatric illness. We know that children with untreated chronic psychiatric illnesses are many times more likely than it appears to develop later problems such as substance abuse, aggression, school failure, and medical problems, as well as to have children of their own who are at risk for maltreatment and poor functioning. We're rightly worried about the downstream costs of the obesity epidemic among young people. We should be at least as concerned about their emotional health as about their metabolic health. Thank you.
Hey. My name's Griffin Wilder, and I'm a member of the Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. About a month ago, my stepfather was diagnosed with an advanced stage of prostate cancer. While his diagnosis may be devastating to me and my family, I'm not here to talk about it or our emotional reaction. I'm here because the insurance company has now asked us if we want to max out coverage on his long-term care, or if we still want to go to our various vision, dental, and mental health appointments. At the same time, the state of Vermont has dared to ask me, my family, and thousands of other Vermonters the same question. Which aspects of our healthcare do we value the most? Which benefits are most important to a human life? Let me tell you, from infant to adult and senior, the value of the health of all Vermonters is admirable, and we need a universal healthcare system that covers us as universally, one that excludes no one for the benefit of everyone. This means in terms of access as much as it means in terms of meeting the needs. My story shows why we cannot come here today, why we came here today, to advocate for which benefit we think is most important. We need to shift from coverage to care and from benefits to people. In Vermont, we have a chance to make history. Let's treat healthcare as a human right. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to... And hear from the first person in Williston.
Hi, my name is Eva Swenson. I live in Milton, and I'm a member of the Vermont Workers Center Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. As part of simply provide benefits to people, you have to actually ensure that they actually get the care that they need. It's important, of course, to provide a whole slew of benefits, so everyone receives the care they need, but again, you have to ensure that they receive the care they need, and it's important to ensure that the framework is there so that people can receive the care they need, and in particular, they need to receive it in a timely manner. My personal story is that I had a significant shoulder injury a little over a year ago, and I had to see an orthopedist for it, and the delay in getting to the orthopedist was like a couple of months before I could even be seen. I had the benefit to see him, it was going to be paid for, but there was a delay in it, and every time I had to go back and see the orthopedist, there was another delay. And in the interim, I'm seeing physical therapists, and I'm not improving, and in the end, I reached a point where there was really nothing they could do for it because even though I had coverage and everything was covered, there were so many delays, there was nothing they could do about it. So now I'm stuck with this shoulder that just kind of hangs out there and hurts a lot because I couldn't see people in time, and perhaps if I had been able to see doctors in a more timely manner, they would have been able to address the issues I was facing. And like I said, the benefits were there, but it's important that if the benefits are there, people can actually see doctors and receive the care they need. It's not just benefits, it's about care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Marcia Bristow, and I'm a registered dietitian in private practice in Burlington, and I represent the Vermont Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. As registered dietitians, we are devoted to improving the health of all Vermonters through the delivery of food and nutrition information that is scientific and evidence-based. The Vermont Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics urges you to include nutrition services as an essential health benefit. As healthcare professionals, we help deliver coordinated care to people with four of the top seven leading causes of death in Vermont: heart disease, cancer, cerebrovascular disease, and diabetes. In addition, other diseases like obesity, renal disease, and osteoporosis can be positively influenced by nutrition therapy. Medical nutrition therapy is cost-effective. The U.S. Department of Defense saved $3.1 million in the first year of a nutrition therapy program utilizing registered dietitians to counsel patients with cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and renal disease. Studies show that nutrition therapy results in improved health outcomes and cost savings through the prevention and management of diseases. However, these results cannot be realized unless patients with chronic diseases have equal and adequate access to nutrition services provided by registered dietitians through their health benefits. We support a system that will eliminate the disparities in care that currently exist due to limited insurance coverage for nutrition services. We need this coverage if prevention is going to become a priority. We need to treat people before they become chronically ill with diseases like heart disease and diabetes. Let registered dietitians be part of a new system where we can deliver food and nutrition information in hospitals, private practices, homes, in the workplace, at schools, and in communities, helping people of all ages to make healthy lifestyle choices. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we currently have anyone in Bennington, so we'll go to Brattleboro.
Hi, my name is Ellen Schwartz. I'm from Brattleboro, and I'm a member of the Vermont Workers Center Healthcare as a Human Rights Campaign. As a Green Mountain Care Board considers the benefits and benefit designs, it is crucial that the starting point of this is meeting people's health needs by enabling the people of Vermont to access the comprehensive, appropriate care that's mandated by Act 48. One of the many problems with our current non-system is that it separates different types of care. I've had numerous plans over the years as my employer has changed policies in an effort to save money. Some of my policies or plans included preventive care, others did not. Some included mental health, others did not. I urge the board to take a holistic view of health, by which I mean including preventive care along with the often sidelined areas of mental health, substance abuse treatment, eye care, and dental care. Several years ago, I was facing some major dental work. I don't have dental insurance, and the procedure I was looking at would have been prohibitively expensive. Fortunately for me, my dentist was able to do a workaround that was less expensive, but that experience brought home to me the financial and health risk I'm in without dental coverage. At some point, my dentist's fix may fail, and I may again be facing the need for care that I can't afford. I fail to understand why such areas as dental care are considered separate from other forms of healthcare. Green Mountain Care has the chance to get this right by recognizing that people are not made up of discrete parts, but that we are organisms that function as a whole, and so comprehensive benefits need to include all areas of health. My particular scare was about dental health, but I'm not here to argue for dental coverage at the expense of other needed care. Rather, my point is that the benefit design needs to meet all health needs so that our new healthcare system truly fosters everyone's good health. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lynn Aki, a citizen of Brattleboro and a member of the Vermont Workers Center and Put People First Campaign. I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me in regards to this important issue, universal healthcare coverage. My sister worked all her life in the community aiding others, has her bachelor's degree in assisted others with disabilities and with youth in positive recreational activities for over 25 years. Now my sister is a double amputee. Her reward for this productive life is that now she must endure a spend-down because even though she's on disability, she makes over the limit. She has a deductible in order to get medical rights. She also has to pay for a secondary insurance to pay for her medications. This extra $400 per month, take it out of her check, seriously embarrass her quality of life because she's a diabetic, and therefore she can't afford healthy foods. On the other hand, I had a major heart attack, and I am fortunate to have Medicare and Medicaid, that I got the wonderful care provided for me with all the medications I am taking, with the co-payments I am provided with. I could never afford my medications, being on disability. I am one of the fortunate ones. In our society today, there is a huge concern with obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. Dental is a serious concern, and proper dental benefits cares should include dentures. As the chewing of food is the first step in proper digestion, and to be able to eat healthy foods such as raw vegetables, fruit, and nuts, dentures are not just for cosmetics. Eating healthy, taking care of our bodies, will cut down on obesity, diabetes, heart disease, mental health, and vision. And it is my belief that no one should be refused healthcare or proper... as the chewing of food is the first step in proper digestion. And to be able to eat healthy foods, such as raw vegetables, fruit, and nuts, dentures are not just for cosmetics. Eating healthy, taking care of our bodies, will cut down on obesity, diabetes, heart disease, mental health, and vision. And it is my belief that no one should be refused healthcare or proper medical treatment because they do not have private health insurance or meet the criteria for public aid. It concerns me of what is to come for my grandchildren and other youngsters now facing this uncertain future. So it's plain old common sense, we need comprehensive care for everyone. Universal means to me psychological, emotional, and physical. So please put people first and take care of us all and give us universal healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone currently in Lindenville to testify, so we'll go to Middlebury.